All right, so we are now officially recorded. Check off that box. We have John Paul, myself, Mary Ashcroft, and Sharon Russell for select board members. And it looks like we have quite a crowd with us as well. So let's get right to it. It's a little after. The orders are ready. Carrie and Susan have the payroll and expenditures completed. They're on the counter here. There's also only one signature so far on the tax rate from last. As many board members can come in over the next coming days to sign the orders and the tax rate that would be by Carrie and Susan. Select more minutes. Well, it looks like we have a slew of minutes to approve. Three sets from the 7th of July, the 21st, and the 28th of July. So let's get started with those. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
The slate of them, Sharon, or?
Yeah, the slate of them. I've read them all. I don't know if everybody has, but.
All right, so the motion is to approve all three minutes. There was a second John Paul.
Yeah, I can't. I gotta withdraw that second.
I can second them all, but I do have a change on the July 28th.
Okay, so for the record, the motion's been taken by Mary Ashcroft. And the 28th, Mary, what page?
First page. This is the setting the tax rate meeting. And down under, let's see, number one, H. Move to approve the tax rate as provided by the town treasurer. Please, Bill, and we should make sure we do this, attach the worksheet that we were all working from to the minutes so that, and then we can also, you know, sign that. But that, we need to have in the minutes what the tax rate is. And by including that worksheet, it's all there.
Good call, Mary. Did you catch any other things with the minutes?
No. Probably should have, but I didn't.
All those in favor of the three minutes, say aye.
Aye.
With the change, aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Josh?
Yeah.
So I have a qualified aye to the first two, but I wasn't at the last. And I have a qualified aye for the last one because I wasn't at the first two.
Hey, Joe. All right, so the good news is we have an affirmative vote for all three sets of minutes with a quorum. And so at your convenience, come in and sign which correlating meeting you attended. And so we can get those on the record, okay? Minutes are handled. Questions from the floor, public comment, anyone who is not on the agenda who wishes to speak at this time. I do see a few phone numbers here that I'm not familiar with. I also see a representative from the Mentor Connector is here. I did have something here on my desk from them. So did you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and start? I think you're on mute.
There we go. Hi, I'm Tara Palio, and I'm the Outreach Director for the Mentor Connector. And we're seeking approval to have public yard signs, whether they're on public property, commercial, or private, 18 by 24 for a recruiting campaign that we are launching in September. We would have them put up by volunteers and removed by volunteers as they're expensive and we want to reuse them anyway. So we would definitely make sure that they were retrieved. So we're just seeking approval from the town for that.
So these are just the standard yard signs you see, same size as a political sign or whatever?
Yes.
So we don't have any zoning ordinances against signs. I would defer to my board members for their comments, but as long as my understanding is they just can't be, they're not supposed to be in the public right of way, correct, Byron?
Right.
Hold on, Byron's on mute. Hold on.
Yeah, there's a state law involved with that. And I think so many days before an election, some signs are permitted. But other than that, I think they need to be outside of the public right of way.
Okay.
And these are non-political, like the hospital signs about COVID-19 and things like that, right?
Yeah, they're very simple and just say, we're seeking mentors. We have 65 youth on our waiting list and very few opportunities to recruit. So this is the way we're going.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of it. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board and anything from my colleagues on this.
No, I support it.
It'd be okay, Josh. It'd be like when we put up political signs, you would have to get permission from the person you're putting the sign on their property.
Yes.
Right, yeah. Good call, Joe.
Yeah, this is Mary. My daughter is one of those 65 waiting. So if you want to put a sign down on my property on Creek Road, feel free.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary.
I'm on Route 7. You're welcome to do mine.
Thank you.
Good. Sounds like you have a thing of the town, so good luck.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for joining.
All right, bye-bye.
Okay, were there any other comments? Anyone who'd like to speak who was not on the agenda? This would be your opportunity if you state your name. All right, hearing none. We'll move on to under Town Departments. Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant. Bill, how are you tonight?
I am good. How are you?
All right, sir.
All right, so got a few things on the list for everybody. So we'll scroll through the packet items. The first thing is the updated committee list. And Josh, you pointed out, we do need to have a building committee meeting. There are several topics we have to discuss and some long-range planning, too. So that would be yourself and Joe. Do you want to try and set that up?
Joe Donardo, can we do it for 5:00 before the next select board meeting in two weeks?
Depends on the hang and everything else, but I'd say yes. The other time would be like some morning early, if that worked for you.
That's.
Whatever.
Billy, Joe and I will get offline. We'll figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Number two is the grant award paperwork for our transportation grant for the sidewalk on Route 7 North. It's all the acceptance paperwork. I can digitally sign it, so we don't have to actually send anything back in, if you like, or we can sign it and email it back in. But we do need to get an answer back to them if we're going to accept the grant or not.
This is Mary. I move, this is JP Sidewalk, that's AKA JP Sidewalk. So I move, we approve the grant, noting that the town will be paying $8,000 toward its matching share, and we have budgeted for that in the budget.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John Paul to authorize Bill to electronically sign the grant application for the sidewalk on Route 7 North. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Number three is, just for your information, it's just a copy of Act 250 land use permit for an upcoming project, so no action to this point, just for your information and awareness. Number four is from the Harbor Freight Project. Their follow-up to the comment letter from V-Trans, so their progress on requests made by them. So they are going to put in a sidewalk to connect Route 7 to their property. So that's their follow-up for some of the V-Trans comments, so that's all looking good. Number five.
Yes, Bill, can I interrupt you a minute?
Sure.
I just can't get over the fact that V-Trans is so hung up on these sidewalks. They killed the project on Route 7 North because there was no sidewalk. And I'm wondering if they would have killed this one if Harbor Freight didn't agree to put the sidewalk in.
I don't know.
It amazes the daylight company. But anyway, I'm glad they're moving forward, and I'm glad Harbor Freight went along with it.
Harbor Freight, those developers have seemed to have been pretty receptive to any of the comments or, you know, requests made by them. They've been pretty receptive all along. And on that note, Andres did reach out to them. I'm not sure if he got an answer back. I wasn't on the loop, but I know he did reach out to them to try and start a conversation about the stormwater needs down there. So he is working on that as well.
Okay, you know, I was hoping V-Trans would have some input on that, too, but I think they're more concerned about sidewalks than stormwater treatment and taking care of that. But anyway, thanks for the good work, Bill.
Absolutely. Number five is from the Police Department. For your discussion, I think Ted might bring that up later. Number six, there's two pages there. It's time for the annual reappointments for the Transportation Council and the Representatives of the Regional Planning Commission. So currently, Bill Mattson is the Representative for the Regional Planning Commission, and Byron is for our Transportation Council. I did send out a message to Bill. He did not get back to me with an answer either way, so I don't know if he's still interested or not. I think Byron indicated that he was still interested, would willing to do that again.
Well, we could also appoint, reappoint Bill, and then if he notifies us any different. I know he's been busy, so. Where the board's pleasure is. So Byron, you're good to go?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. What's the board's pleasure?
So I move we reappoint Bill Mattson as regular commission to the Regional Planning Commission, and Byron Hathaway as alternate commissioner.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John Paul for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Then the Transportation Council. I move we appoint, reappoint Byron as our representative, and Jim Hall as our alternate.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John Paul for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
We have, hold on just a second here. Bill, do you know a flurry of new people that have just admitted to the call?
Yeah, how's it going?
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing good.
Good. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting.
Yes, hello. How's it going? Yeah, I know.
Okay. Bill Sweet, what else do you have for us?
Number seven is the information released on the grant opportunity to apply for funds to digitize land records.
This is Mary. I had flagged this, and JP had expressed some concern. So I was reading over the criteria, and it appears as a precondition, we need to create and maintain what's called the Land Records Preservation Fund.
I agree.
And I looked this up because I hadn't heard of it. And sure enough, it's a fairly new, it was enacted in the 2019 session. And it was a way to get towns to, it gave the towns their increase in recording fees. That was the carrot. The stick was the towns were to maintain this fund, putting aside a certain amount of money every year to maintain and preserve land records. We sort of did that, but we call it the microfilming fund. So if we wanted to move forward with this grant, then first, I think we need to rename the microfilming fund as our Land Records Preservation Fund. And then from there on, and this was nobody's real oversight, we just, you know, we were changing town clerks, and it didn't get built in as part of our budget and probably should have done. So we've left the conversation about whether we should apply for the grant to digitalize our land records. But if we do so, we will also need to take the step of doing something to create this Land Records Preservation Fund.
So my concern with doing this was the security of the information, which none of the vendors, we had looked into this earlier on, Mary, and nobody could really give us satisfactory answers as to who would be responsible for the security of the information, which, as you know, can be quite personally identifiable once you do that. So I just wanted to express that concern and put that in the scope of the conversation.
How does the digitalization of the records, where is it stored, and how is that done?
Those are among the issues that I think need to be talked about, or at least we need to learn about them. Because we never got any good answers for that, Joe.
Okay, because I was just wondering if this was just a way to put these on to electronic, you know, either small.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know who got cut off, and I apologize for that. The only thing, I sort of was on board with what you were saying, because I've also heard of this title, what's it called, Title Lock Insurance or something you can buy now from hackers, you know, take somehow stealing your mortgage identity. But from what I've learned since was this information wouldn't be, for example, digitized and just on our website for anyone to browse. It would be, you would have to have a secured, we'd have to have a portal with a login and password for paralegals and researchers and so on to get onto the site. So that might take care of some of the issues of security, in my mind, anyway. Mary and John Paul, you're the attorneys who deal with way more than me, so.
Yes, several municipalities have gone to online searches. There's a couple of ways. One is, I can sign on as a guest, for example, and do a title search, at least to see names of people to and from, people who have bought and sold property. And to access the actual deed, I would have to then go to the next step. But I use this mostly to find out activity so I can follow up and go into the town or the city clerk's office and actually pull the deed and look at it. But at least then, I use the index just to know what has been recorded. But, you know, I'm not familiar with all of the ins and outs of how it can be secured. But again, these are public documents. These are available for anyone to go into the town land records and view these documents. There should not be anything that's proprietary in them.
Things like social security numbers and personal information, those wouldn't be anything to do with this paperwork, right, Mary?
What I'm familiar with are deeds and mortgages. So you would have probably the value of a mortgage that's on a property, and then the fact that you gave whatever bank a mortgage deed on the property. But that's information that is there now. Social Security numbers are put on the transfer tax returns, which are now digitally filed with the Tax Department. And I think identifying information is not on, we don't file it with the town clerk anymore. The town clerk does get some information, but Carrie might answer that part a little bit better.
So John Paul, if it was a portal system with a login and password, would that, and it wasn't open to the public, would that make you feel a little more at ease with your concerns, or that's still part of the whole big, the problem in your mind?
Yeah, well, I'd like to hear from some technical people who could explain to us, you know, the ins and outs of a system like that, and whether or not it's something people can get into. And I don't know whether the system would include recording the transfer tax return, which has obviously sensitive information on it.
When does this grant application do?
I know it's a competitive grant, and it's going to be first come, first served, so. And the word is out to the towns. It looks something, let's see. Funds are supposed to be reserved until September 1st, 2020. There's a cap of $20,000 per municipality. And then as of September 1st, 2020, the Agency of Administration will figure out who should get whatever is left, if there is any left.
Do we have any sense, Mary, as to what the total cost to do something like this would be?
No, because we've never looked into it. My understanding is we have to provide for at least five, if we get the grant, it has to cover at least five years' worth of putting the land records in digital form.
But so is there somewhere we could go to get? Yeah, I'm wondering if there's somewhere we could go to get an estimate of that cost. But how would it, could we apply for the grant, and then if we don't use it, we don't use it kind of thing? Or do we have to commit to the project before we get the money?
Yeah, I remember one grant that we did get for stormwater mitigation, and then we rejected it. We never signed the final document that came through. So, you know, I don't know the answer. But I think, anyway, if we're going to commit to it, we should, you know, we don't have a lot of time. We've got one meeting between now and when probably the money's going to be used up. We did not put in place the Land Records Preservation Fund, which we should have done in last year's, in this year's budget, when we were budgeting in November and December. So, you know, whether we would get it anyway because we don't have that, I don't know.
Yeah, I just, nothing good has ever come from rushing a municipal issue.
What if we apply for it and we try to, we reach out to some of these sister municipalities of ours who use one of these companies and see if we can get a, you know, a representative from their company to come to our next meeting and answer some of our questions? What other towns around, Mary, do you know that uses a system or product like this?
The City of Rutland, probably. I think Pittsburgh does, but the city is the one that I'm most familiar with.
So what if, what if we apply for the grant? In the meantime, Bill connects with Henry Heck, the town, or the city's clerk, or we have Carrie connect with the city clerk, and we can find out who they use, maybe get some of these questions answered, and if we get the money and we turn it away, then so be it.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, we've also got the issue of the, and so I will make a motion that we treat the microfilming line item in our budget as the start of a Land Records Preservation Fund to meet the grant requirement. And from here on in, and maybe that's part of the discussion, here on in, we also have to be putting aside $4 per recorded page into this fund. So I don't know if you folks want to do that right now.
Does your motion include putting $4 per recorded page?
Yeah.
That was just a statement?
No, well, I think, no, the motion includes putting aside $4 a page because that's what the statute requires. I just barely read the statute. And, well, I'll speak a little bit more if it's seconded, otherwise it can just, like, go away.
Okay, is there a second to Mary's motion? Is there a second to Mary's motion?
Okay, the only other thing I was going to say is we have already budgeted, used that $4 per page for the general fund. It's part of our general fund revenue, so we're kind of trapped here. So, anyway, it doesn't sound like we need to be moving forward or can move forward with this at this point.
Okay. On to the next topic. Bill, what else? Take yourself off mute.
Yep. Harbor Freight did say they are moving right along with their Act 250 permit and wanted to know if the town, if we wanted a pre-construction meeting or notice of any construction requirements, if we wanted any of that before they broke ground, if they got approval to do so.
I think the more documentation we can get, the better, right?
Okay.
Yeah, what I really, what I really want to know about is what Andres come up with, and whether it's going to mitigate some of our stormwater runoff issue down there.
Okay, I will, I'll follow up with Andres, see if he made any headway. Did we want to ask them for a pre-construction meeting?
It would be onsite, right?
They didn't give any details, just asked if we wanted one. I'm assuming if we did, that they would work out the details after that.
Well, my suggestion would be is that we request one, and particularly if we can do some kind of a joint stormwater project down there as part of this.
Okay, so I will let them know that we would like to do, like to at least talk about doing both of those and see what we get.
Right.
There, so, and the last two things, in your email, we got from the 2020 census, a certification of our town boundary. Do we say it's correct, or do we say it's incorrect? So you got a copy of the map and the form. I looked at it, it looks correct to me, but Josh needs to be the one that signs it saying that it is correct.
Let us hear some more.
Where did the map come from?
It came from the census, they attached the map along with the, with the form.
Pretty tough to read.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says as good as it was, but I believe that that's based upon the last census, so I don't think our town boundaries changed since then.
Yeah, I don't think they did either. So I'll move that we accept the map and authorize Josh to sign certifying that it's correct.
Second that motion.
Motion by Mary, second by Joe Donardo. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Okay. And the last thing I have is we received another peddler permit request from Steak and Seafood Direct to operate on the property of Tractor Supply. Later on this week, they did get permission from Tractor Supply to be there. But I wanted to bring it to you guys, there were a couple issues with them being down there last time, so we wanted to discuss it with everybody and get their input.
So I do know that Ted Washburn had a concern or two, and in fact, I see him shaking his head across the hall here, no. Last time they were in town was in the early onset of pandemic. They did not get their permit. They started operating beforehand. They finally did, myself and Ed Dumas had gone down there. They finally did fill out the permit and paid us $100 in cash to be able to operate. The $100 represents the fee that we charged for the peddler permit. But then we did, then we did receive a few complaints from, I don't know if they were all town residents, but customers of these folks who said that it was deceptive pricing, and it was bait and switch, and that, I do know one town resident had taken it all the way up to the filing complaint with the Attorney General's Office for this group. So that's why it was brought up tonight from Bill. And Ted, Ted Washburn, are you there if you want to say anything?
I'm here. So last, last time they came into town, like the chairman had said, they started operating without doing anything, waiting for approval or anything. Myself, Officer Gamble, and then Chief Dumas and the Chairman of the Board had to get involved just to bring them into compliance with the peddler's permit. We actually had to work out a different system to make it so that people could try to social distance, but it wasn't being a. but it wasn't being enforced. They just, I think they caused way too many headaches. And I know with this permit, they want to start tomorrow morning. And they gave us a day's notice.
I move to deny.
Yeah, that's simple.
Motion by?
They did update their request. They're not going to be tomorrow, it's going to start on the 6th.
I still move to deny.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, second by John Paul. Further discussion?
Well, they're going to ask why. So it's going to be some complaints from their previous stay here and concern about not complying with the COVID safety mandates that are in place.
Correct, incorrect.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion to deny the permit, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill and Ted, you'll let them know?
Yeah, I'll take it, yep. That was everything I have.
Okay. Thanks, anything for Bill, folks? Okay, we're going to go to Town Clerk and Treasurer, Carrie Clark. Carrie, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right, how are you tonight?
Hold on, I need to put the volume on. Hey, go ahead.
I was just asking how you're doing tonight, Carrie.
Oh, I'm well. Hope everyone else is well.
A week away, a week away from the big primary. How many absentee ballots have we sent out, Carrie?
We have sent out 1,016 absentee ballots. We have 3,000 registered voters in the town. So we're, we've sent out a third of our ballots. We have received half of those back. So if you have one that we've sent out to you, we request that if you do so choose, send that back through the mail to us. So we can process it on time.
I do know that Secretary Mendoza today was really pushing that today should be the day that people get them in the mail to make sure that there's enough time for the postal service to get them back to us. So we, Bill, and Bill, we should put on the website and the Facebook page that we really encourage you to, if you're going to mail them back in, do it sooner than later. Because we want your, your vote to count.
Yeah, actually, I just made a note earlier that we need to do that. Like, I think today was the last day to recommend to get it mailed or to have people drop it off. So, yep, we'll, we'll make that out there.
Carrie, a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Mary. I had one voter who said he, he had voted absentee using that, but there was no return envelope. I told him to get in touch with you. Was he in touch with you?
I didn't take a call from a return envelope. Perhaps I know who you're talking about and we have figured that situation out.
Okay.
For any public members that are listening, if there is an issue with anything about your absentee ballot, don't hesitate to give the office a call. We'll try to take good care of you to get your absentee ballot back in. One thing that we did do as of this morning, a lot of people were coming to our town hall. And as much as we want to see everyone, we're still closed to the public. So we put a drop box out front, much like the one that we used for tax payments. And people who felt as though they needed to bring their absentee ballot to the building can put that in the drop box. We go out there regularly and, and bring it in. So that's an option. As far as absentee requests and postcards, you, I think it's a good idea to use tomorrow as kind of the cutoff day to give us a call so we can get it in the mail and out to you and you can get it back to us. Because if we're receiving them as late as Friday or, you know, over the weekend, we can't guarantee that they will be back in time for the election.
So Carrie, what happens if a resident wants to vote early, absentee or by mail, come by the town hall and they want to vote, which is their legal right? What do we, how are we allowing them to vote with the building being closed?
You know, that's a really good question that Susan and I have actually asked ourselves because I think it's something that I'd like to put out there for you guys to discuss. I mean, my first thought is that we're closed and we're offering the absentee option. But I'd love to hear what you all think and what, what has worked in the past. I know this is a different kind of situation. So is that something that you're willing to talk about for a couple of minutes? Because I'm sure we're going to get that situation coming up in the next couple of days.
Well, I don't know legally how we could, if someone wants to vote in a string of business hours, I don't know how we could deny it. Maybe hand them the ballot and the pen and they can vote in their vehicle and bring it back to the door or something, but.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Legally can't turn these folks away. That would be, that would be really a, a problem, I'm sure, with everyone, including the Secretary of State, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree. I think we could also ask them to make an appointment for a time when they would be in.
That, that's the best opportunity.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take appointments.
Carrie and Susan could handle that. And because, Mary, like, we're in this unique situation where I know there are rules with voting and what Josh is saying, but everything has kind of been thrown up in the air and nobody knows what applies and what doesn't apply.
Yeah.
But I don't think we want to deny anybody the right to vote.
Exactly, exactly. You're in that situation, you err on letting the voter vote.
Right, that's right, Mary. I agree. The problem is, yes, that if you have somebody that isn't listening into this or hasn't checked the website and they show up at the town office, in my opinion, they should be allowed to vote.
I agree with you.
They may have to wait a few minutes, but yes.
Right.
They should be allowed to vote, yeah.
Right.
As a practical matter, if you, if you don't have some mechanism like this for allowing people to vote at the town office in advance of the election, they're going to be calling for sick ballots on the day before and absolutely swamp the two people who do sick ballots. So I don't think we want to be in that position.
That makes sense. So as, I just wanted to touch upon what I know for Election Day on Tuesday. Just for anyone listening, we're still going ahead with our regular polling places, which is the town hall and at the school. The state is taking many precautions for the disinfecting of the areas. And obviously, we will do our best to make sure people are six feet apart. I'm sure that's not going to be a problem. And they are encouraging the wearing of a mask into the polling place. We certainly cannot deny anyone the right to vote if they're not wearing a mask, but we can encourage them to use an area that's away from others as, as it's come down from the state saying that we can do that.
I mean, the governor has mandated masks, so.
Yeah, there's no excuse for somebody showing up at a polling place without a mask other than they're just being a troublemaker. And we've had those, no doubt about it.
If somebody, if somebody is, is sick and cannot wear a mask, that I do understand. I mean, if, if they can't wear a mask due to COPD or whatever, then I understand that. But just not wearing a mask because they don't want to, no.
That doesn't crutch it anymore.
Nope.
Well, hopefully, everybody that shows up to vote in person will understand the importance of the face coverings and you won't have any issues.
Right, but hope.
I agree. I, I'm hoping that everyone will respect everyone else's wishes and do what they need to do for themselves. The last thing that I just wanted to touch upon.
Carrie, hold on. I'd like to just back up one step so we understand. So if someone, someone tomorrow shows up to town hall, pulls on the door, they want to, A, if there's no one in the building, title research or whatever, you're going to count that as an appointment, they can come in.
Yes.
B, they, they have the right to wait until whoever's out of your office. Or C, they can take the ballots and vote in their car and then return it to you immediately after, correct?
Correct. All three choices, yes.
But in all three choices, they have to wear a mask.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone was questioning that.
Yep. Well, not, not anybody here, but it's the out there that will be questioning it. You can count on it.
There has been a few people that show, have shown up to town hall recently in the last couple of days and they aren't wearing masks. So we encourage them to go get one before we enter, open the door. So it does happen. Um, the last, oh, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Carrie, you finish up. I don't want to interrupt you.
Oh, you're fine. I just wanted to also let people know that the tax bills, we're getting a lot of calls about when they're getting their tax bills. And we are on time with the tax bill. And we plan on getting those out by the end of this week or the beginning of next week. So they will be there on time.
So is this, Josh, a good time to talk about the insert that I typed up after we had the discussion last meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that you wrote that, I thought it was great.
Okay, great. Last meeting, we thought that we might want to explain a little bit about the 1% tax and how we're watching it and what our options are if it comes in less than projected. And the other thing was to explain why there was no general fund that we were raising taxes for. So I basically just explained that on a slip of paper that will fit without folding in with the tax bill. That was the big goal there.
Thank you, Mary, for that.
That was short and sweet, Mary, and to the point and pretty accurate. And I think we should just do it. If Carrie's okay with doing it.
I'm, I'm fine. I'm, I'm just thankful that it fit on a half piece of paper.
The third, actually. So we'll come over and use the paper chopper. Yeah, no, chopper.
I would move that we include Mary's few paragraphs in with the tax bills.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by Sharon for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That's all I had, Josh.
Okay, anything for Carrie?
Josh?
Yeah, Byron, go.
Could Carrie explain to me what her protocols are for making bank deposits? I asked this question because I've had, in the last six months, two customers at the cemetery who have called me wanting to know when and why their check hadn't been deposited. So I just wondered what her protocols were for how often she makes bank deposits.
That's a good question, Byron. So when you have given me checks, I, it's typically taking me a week or so to do what I need to do with the deed and record the deed. And then when I get the personal checks, I deposit them into our, our cemetery fund. And then I write out a check to the investment fund that we have set up. I then let our person know over at the place that takes care of those checks that it's coming. And that, and then I send the deed back. So it's been a turnaround of maybe two weeks or so. With the recording that's happening right now, I do want to put out there that real estate has been affected greatly with the COVID and refinancing. And I am backed up with recording incredibly right now because of elections and COVID. So because there's a deed that goes along with that, I need to go in date, order, and time. So that's my protocol, but also a side note of how backed up I am on that.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Carrie? All right, thanks, Carrie, for everything. Let's go to Barbara, Pulling Town Planning Commission Chair.
Hi. Good evening.
Barb.
From the Town Planning Commission, we're still looking at the design for the Pocket Park and still looking at all of the historical connections to that area. The more we look at that, the deeper that gets. So we'll have more on that for you. And from the Regional Planning Commission, I have an opportunity to propose to you folks. It's time to apply for municipal planning grants again. And those are not just for town plans. They can be for any kind of planning. And new this year, planning for economic recovery from COVID-19 is allowed. Fair and affordable housing is still getting the highest priority for those planning grants. So we could look at something like that. We could look at whether we want corridor planning for Business Route 4 or if we have any growth centers or things like that we might want to pursue. So that's, that's open right now. The Regional Planning Commission can help with that application process. And the applications are due October 1st. And the state thinks it will have money for these planning grants despite the budget situation.
Is there anything that comes to any board member's mind? That we could, I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
Well, I, I know we do want a grant to see if we can move forward on the Chisana Drive, Northwood Park walkway. But I think it's beyond the planning grant stage. I think that's a Byron question.
Any thoughts on that, Byron?
Yeah, I think you're, you're going to be looking at, and I don't think it's in our current budget, but you're going to be looking at, to make that connection with the pool like we've talked about for many years, you're going to need a bicycle pedestrian grant.
Right.
And those grants are out right now. But I, I think we need to make the actual connection at Northwood first and then show that connection. And then I think we'll be successful in getting the other grant. In the meantime, we've got the other sidewalk on the north end scoping studies. And you need to get that under motion and get that taken care of, which will also help show connection with Rutland City all the way to Northwood at that point.
Right, okay.
Those sound like Vtrans grants, right, Byron?
That, that's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, this planning grant is through the ACCD. I forgot to mention that towns can go in together for these grants as well. Two or more towns.
Those are the grants, those planning grants, the same one that we used with West Rutland for that, for that Business Route 4 corridor.
I think that was a Smart Growth. I think that was.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like we have a little more time to talk about it anyway, right, Barb?
Yeah. A little bit more.
Okay.
It's August already, right?
Well, we'll put it on, Bill, let's put on the agenda for two weeks just so we don't forget about it and we have something to talk about, all right? Do you hear that, Bill?
Yes.
Yes, sir, thanks. Barbara, anything else?
That's it, for me.
Anything for my colleagues for Barbara? All right, Barb, thanks. Mike Rowe, Town Record Commissioner.
Good evening, how are you all?
Good, sir.
A couple of things I want to thank those that were able to and thank Jim Hall for the senior luncheon today at Sugar and Spice. That was in lieu of going to the pool for our annual cookout that we have. So we're hoping next year we can bring that back. And we've discussed the options of the holiday senior luncheon as well. So that was a nice thing today. It was good weather, it wasn't too hot. And Sugar and Spice today, fantastic job. So that was a nice thing today. It was good weather. It wasn't too hot, and Sugar and Spice did a fantastic job. Um, I, we're putting up, uh, as you know, there's lots going on, um, up at the park. If you don't, there's lots going on. I had a, uh, resident, Susan Elliott, and her husband, I ran into them a couple of weeks ago, and they're avid bird watchers, and they keep records of all the birds at Northwood Park, and they send the data off to Cornell University. So we got to talking, and, uh, I expressed that it would be great to put some signs up. So here we are, fast forward. The signs are being printed so that when you walk through the trails at Northwood, you can look to see the different species of birds. So that's just one more thing added to our beautiful park up there, and I want to thank.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, it was Susan Elliott, her and her husband, they're just, it was fantastic. It was a great meet, and I'm really glad that we are connected and were able to just add to the, the greatness of the park.
Um, can we send a thank you note to the Elliotts?
We most certainly can. I'll get with Bill and we'll do that.
Thank you.
Um, just so you know, I, we're ordering, or I'm purchasing a, uh, attachment for the rec tractor. It's a brush hog, um, to, uh, just keep working in the park. It's a piece of equipment that we can use. I've talked with Byron extensively about it. Um, he helped me find the correct one that will fit our needs. Um, so we're taking care of that. I'll get together with Carrie. That is in my budget under new equipment. Um, and so I'm going to move forward with that. Uh, let's see. Oh, the pool. Josh will be very happy. The pool this year, we're going to try to stay open as long as we can. Definitely past Labor Day. So that's where we're going right now. So the guards that are still in town have committed. I have enough guards to continue swimming, um, until they start school on the 8th of September. So that's a cool thing. We're hoping that we have great weather. We haven't been able to do this before, but this is a positive with all the other negative that's been going on. So I'm really happy that as of right now, we're planning to swim until September, uh, you know, 7th, and then depending on the weather, maybe we'll go a little bit longer. Um, so if you're okay with that, we have plenty of money. We're financially okay with that for staffing, for chemicals, and all that. So I thought that was, uh, kind of a cool thing happening.
I think it's great. It, it always seems like we have to close because the kids go back to college, and then, uh, inevitably, it's like the hottest week of the summer that the pool's closed, and people are saying, what the heck? And, you know, so this is cool that it's going to be open for the rest of the week of September, so.
Yeah, and I, speaking of that, our protocols have been working very well. People have been, um, very receptive and understanding about the mask policy and, and signing up, so things have been going very smoothly with that. I'm very happy with that. Today, we closed actually early. It was the first day all summer that we've done that, so, other than a, a thunderstorm here or there. So things are going well. Um, if you have any questions, just let me know. Uh, I think that's kind of it for right now, that I have.
You going to talk about the pickleball courts?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Well, I had a lady call me, and, uh, she said, there's a group, um, and I forgot her name, and, and she, um, she asked if we could, um, now, I, I'm an avid pickleball fan. For those of people that don't know it, I teach it in class. It's basically, I call it table tennis, if you are standing on top of a ping pong table. So it's a shorter net, a smaller court, you play with a bigger paddle than ping pong and a, and a hard plastic ball. And it's a great activity in a small area. People put them in there, drive the waves. So she called and asked if there was any way that we could paint lines at, uh, Northwood. And I said, well, I just spent a lot of money resurfacing, and I don't want to confuse people with lines. I said, give me a, give me a little bit to figure it out. I, it took me about five seconds after I hung up the phone with her. I called her right back and said, I have the perfect spot. Um, I said, over at Dewey, we have a, an expanded parking that we can put courts there. She was great with that. I went over the next afternoon and painted the lines myself. So now, um, we're just in the process of adding another recreational activity, um, and I'm just waiting to hear more from this group of people that have been playing in the city, uh, and I'll help them out in any way that I can. So I'm, I'm very pleased about that, that we now have three pickleball courts. So if you have a net and you have your paddles, you can go over to Dewey Field. It's lined for you. Enjoy yourself. So yes, thank you. I forgot about that. Thank you.
All right, Mike, thank you. Uh, Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Uh, yeah, uh, just a couple of things. An announcement that, uh, we have discovered a culvert on Gleason Road. Uh, it's near the Town Land Road intersection. It's actually on Moon Brook. This culvert has started to fail, uh, to the point where we have a small dip in the road, um, on the north edge of the road. And so scrambling around here, I made some phone calls and, uh, uh, some emails today, trying to get some information. And hopefully, we'll be able to tap into some of our, um, carryover money to, uh, replace that. It's a, currently, it's a five-foot diameter, 50-foot-long culvert, uh, probably be a little pricey. Um, I'm hoping that the River Mill Court will not require us to have a concrete box culvert there, but rather, um, be able to just put another pipe in there, which we should be able to secure, um, hopefully, um, within the next three or four weeks. Um, and if that's the case, we should be able to get that in, um, by October and have a safe road for the winter. If not, it's something that we'll just have to keep an eye on in the winter. Yeah, if it does, like, you know, open up a hole or something of that nature, at that point, you, you do whatever you can do, uh, even if you use a steel plate to cover the road, uh, to make it safe for the winter. So I'm just letting you know that. Uh, certainly, we'll have more information in the next couple of weeks for you on, on that. Um, my other question was, uh, uh, stormwater permit for the storage building at Northwood. Um, there was a question about the word disconnect being used by the Agency of Natural Resources. I did check into that, and yes, it means just exactly what it means. If the stormwater runoff from the proposed, uh, storage building is disconnected, in other words, does not mix with the stormwater from the currently permitted highway garage, then it reduces the amount of effort and, uh, design work and that sort of thing for the proposed building. And that's why, um, Otter Creek lowered their estimate to a flat rate of $6,000 with the hope that that disconnect did exist. So my question is, um, at this point, do we want to move forward with this? Um, or is this a project that's going to have to sit dead on the table for a while?
What's the board's feeling on that?
Well, I'll move, we were waiting for this piece of information, so I'll move that we, um, hire Otter Creek Engineering for the stormwater permit for the storage shed and proceed with the project. Uh, at a price not to exceed, um, for the engineering, not to exceed, uh, $6,000. And where does it come from?
So there's a motion on the floor, second by Joe DiNardo. Now, where does the money come from?
Yeah. Did anybody remember how we had?
And the cost associated with billing, we proposed would be shared equally amongst, uh, recreation, um, the police department and, and highway. Um, I would propose that initially, we tap into a little bit of that, uh, carryover money to get this thing moving, and then, um, maybe later in the winter, as budgets get further along into their, um, into their usage, we can transfer monies from recreation as well as police, if it's appropriate.
All right with me. We've got this far anyway. We've got quite an investment here, and no offense, unless they just sit there and go to waste.
Sounds good. Any objections to that?
Uh, should I make that part of my motion, that the funding be, come from the, um, I think it's, what, Capital Improvement Fund? The carryover fund?
That, they're two different, aren't they, Mary? One is Byron's carryover.
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
And that's not what I had on, was Byron suggested it come from his Capital Improvement Fund or the?
Yes.
Well, yeah, highways, carryover, and how they do that, so.
That's, that's different.
Right. One is, one is specifically with highway and one is townwide.
That's correct. And since there's three departments that are benefiting from it, I'm wondering if it, it should come from the Capital Improvements Fund, which has in excess of $200,000 in it?
That's, that sounds good to me. That, that this is a perfectly good use for money that we've got for a special project that we need to do.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
That motion approved?
Not yet.
We got a board on.
I think so.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Any objections? All right, motion passes.
Okay.
Byron, now, we got to have a quick executive session with personnel matter at the end.
Okay, uh, we can do that one, so you'll let me know what the login is for that?
Yeah, uh, I think what, how we'll do it is we'll just remove everyone else from the call, and then we'll hang in there.
Yeah, at the, at the end of the meeting, we'll just have it, put everybody out that's not part of it, and just, just stay right there.
And Byron, I think.
Putting the cat out at night.
Yeah.
I think that I need about three minutes or so with the board before we invite you in, so we'll, we'll figure out all the technical parts at the end, all right?
Okay, Jim Schultz here.
Yeah, well, you got to choose one for the executive session, so.
Can I say meow?
What's that?
Can I say meow?
Yeah, yeah, please. All right, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Uh, Byron, uh, Josh, before you go, I got a question for Byron. You didn't ask for any questions.
Go ahead.
Byron, Byron, are you monitoring, are you monitoring the, uh, project on McKinley Avenue in the Exeter State Police Garage where the gentleman keeps adding more fill and more fill in the town right away?
I haven't been down there lately, but is he adding more fill now?
Yes, he was working Sunday and over the weekend, and I figured it was because everybody doesn't work weekends, and he put a bunch, at least one tandem load, more stuff in there, and he was out grading, and I, I'm not sure how that's going to affect the wetland that was there that's now gone, and the drainage of the waters along McKinley Avenue in that corner, because I'm afraid they're going to be coming over the road or something. He, he's out there doing a lot of tinkering, so just something to keep you an eye on, please.
Well, I think he works weekends because he works for the state during the day, and, uh, I'll be in touch with him and go down and take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
But there's a morning after all this rain. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
All right, any further questions for Byron? All right, let's go to Clark, Town Fire Chief. Chris, can you hear us?
I can. Just one thing tonight. I got a new, new member for you guys to approve. Um, name's Tim Kenny. Lives on Grove Street, 25 years old, passed the background check, so I just need your approval so I can bring him aboard.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd make him, I'll make a motion we approve.
Motion's made by Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary, for discussion. Who lives on Grove Street, the chief?
He lives in Rotten Town.
Okay.
Chris, Chris, does he live right down here by the farm?
Uh, he lives at 1068.
Yes, okay. I know the gentleman.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Chris, uh, Chief Clark, what, uh, how was that training last night at the mall?
It was fantastic. Lot of turnout.
How many departments were there?
Um, six.
Nice.
I drove up around there just to see the, the, the new city truck, which was really impressive.
Pretty nice.
Yeah.
I think, I think Bill Sweet went for a ride in it, didn't you, Bill? Up in the air, I mean.
Yeah, up, up in the air. I got pictures to prove it, but yeah, it was, uh, it's, 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 it's a pretty high truck, but it was, uh, it was a very nice ride.
For a million and a half dollars, it should be.
It ought, it ought to be, yep. Yep.
Well, I, I hope it serves the city as well as the one that it replaced. That truck was there forever, and, uh, they got a lot of use out of the old truck.
Yeah, good for them. Congratulations to the city for that new purchase. Uh, Chris Clark, anything further for the board?
Nope, that's it.
All right, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Ed Dumas is absent. Ted Washburn is here. Ted, how are you tonight?
We're doing very well. How's everybody else?
All right, good.
Okay.
Leah Forsnight, Deputy Chief.
Um, our two-week report didn't go out in the meetings, but we did have 63 calls for service in the last two-week period. Uh, if any of the board members would like a copy, just reach out to me and I'll forward it to you. Uh, I believe Chief Dumas forwarded our latest speed cart survey to everybody. Did everybody get a chance to see that?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so the idea was brought up that we publish the speed cart surveys on the town website when we do them, so that way there, anybody who wants to know what's going on with locations, they can just look them up themselves. Does that sound like something the board would want us to do?
I think so, yeah. People will know we're using and we're gathering the data.
Okay, great.
All right, that's simple. I can just forward it to Bill, and then he can upload it. Um, there was an addition to the packet that I believe Bill was talking about in regards to what Westminster Dispatch or State Police Dispatch will and will no longer provide for services.
Yeah, can you review that quickly, Ted?
Um, so a new directive sent out by the State Police Dispatch on July 22nd, uh, highlighting the things that dispatch center is no longer going to do, or the limited things that they are going to do. Um, from what I understand, this has to do with them trying to save money because of the COVID epidemic. Um, so there's that. Uh, I really don't even know where to start. A lot of the stuff is stuff we usually relied on, stuff that we, if we're away from our cruiser or our vehicle, we ask state to do for us because it's quicker, it's easier, and it's less hassle for us. Um, we're going to have to be doing a lot of that ourselves now, either on scene, or we're going to have to stop while responding to try to figure out if this is something we have to take care of prior to, or if this is something they're going to cover. Um, so just be aware of that. There are calls for service that they flat out said they will not enter. They call them non-emergency administrative, so VIN checks, public speakings, directed patrols, special assignments, things, cases like that. If somebody were to call in and ask for that, they're not going to enter the call. And we've already had one incident where a town resident called for a VIN verification. They called me. I said, can you please enter the call, because I was not aware of this new policy, and then I would take care of it, and they never entered the call, and I have no idea who actually called that in. So I'm afraid that we could be having some town residents call in for services, and we actually have no idea they called.
So, uh, chief, what happened, saying that their, their reasoning behind this is because of COVID, they're trying to save money? The only reason you see of this being a, a money saver for them is if they employ less people, staff each shift with less people, uh, is that their intention? Uh, is that their intention and does that pose imminent danger potentially to our officers, fire department, and residents of our town?
So from what I understand that they are not. If they are short, they're not backfilling. So it's I I'm told from people around the state that it's not uncommon for dispatch centers, because we only have two, to maybe have two or three people working for, you know, northern and southern Vermont. So I'm afraid that it could hinder services. I know that we always get told that it won't, but unfortunately I've fallen victim to it several times and it's a sour taste in my mouth.
They told us that when they reduced to just the two piece apps, it wouldn't reduce services and we all know that didn't work.
And they also said that would save money and we saw how much they actually spent on it.
And yeah, and that doesn't work. I think what this is, Ted, is this is the, um, pushback to or the whatever to get the price up and that whole schedule of thousands of dollars to be paid by the, uh, police, fire, and EMS services that they dispatch for. This this will solve the problem when, once they get you over the barrel that you will have to ante up the money they want if you want this level of service that we require.
Correct. So that was, that schedule was passed in legislation this year and it's giving towns three years to figure out how they want to pay for it. Just to let everybody know.
Yeah, so that's just coming. I mean, we're going to be budgeting almost as much for dispatch services or a fair large portion to what we're now dispatching or budgeting for budgets to operate these two departments that benefit from the state dispatch. We're gonna be a big chunk more. So just hold on because the ride is just starting.
Well, should we be talking with other towns and, um, police departments, sheriff's department and so on to see and and the fire departments around to see if there's something we could do as a group to either approach the legislature um, to make sure we're not paying for stuff we're not getting, um, or even setting up our own dispatch service. I know that had been suggested a long time ago. So any movement on any of those?
So I do know that Chief Dumas has reached out to the city police chief to see what it would cost for them to take the town on. I don't know the outcome of that. I believe the chief of the city is still working on that. Um, I don't know where the regional dispatch center stands with the sheriff's department since the sheriff stepped down and the new sheriff Fox took over. I know he's got a lot on his plate right now trying to move from a captain to the sheriff. So and I don't know how. I I think the chief of the fire department would be better understanding on how mutual aid works and what those towns are thinking.
Uh, Ted, has there been any thoughts to doing, you know, the, there's a Rutland County firefighters mutual aid system, the 29 or 30 departments and looking at something that would be a Rutland County dispatch, including, you know, police, EMS, and fire for Rutland County, some something along that line?
That was talked about by Sheriff Bernard and his agency, but it kind of fell flat. And then people asked if Rutland City was going to take it on and Rutland City didn't really give us an answer because same thing, they didn't know how much it would cost.
Right. I mean, it it's obvious that our dispatching services, they're going to go up and I don't mind paying more if we get a good level of dispatch service that fits the needs of the police, fire, and EMS here. Um, I I think this current system is stretched way too thin and it's very difficult to handle an entire state. You know, I I think the county system is kind of going to be the way we're going to have to go to get quality service.
That's that's part of the big push in legislation is to regionalize everything.
Yeah. And and if that's the case, you know, I I think we'd have more say if if every town, you know, you pay on a per capita, per call basis, it could be, it could be fairly distributed the cost. Um, finding the ideal location and getting the necessary equipment in place, you know, it's going to be a big expenditure to start in coming up with staff, but but I think once you own a piece of this, I think we'd be way, you know, much better with, much happier with the results.
Yeah, I won't disagree with you.
Yep. It's it's just going to be expensive whichever way we go and and I I that's it's kind of like a regional high school or any type of thing where you get a bunch of communities together and you can work out the sticky stuff and make it work better.
It's hard for me to hit around this because of all of all the wasteful spending at Montpelier. They're trying to save money when it comes to life services, life safety services. It doesn't make any sense to me, but that's another day to just figure that out, but.
Josh?
Go ahead, Byron.
Hey, Josh.
I have a question for Ted. Did they mention anything about highway departments? I mean, they currently, you know, if somebody calls 911 about a tree down, for instance, they'll they'll call local fire, uh, local highway departments and are they gonna, are they gonna start dropping that too?
So there's actually no mention of highway departments. Um, most of this is pertaining to fire EMS and the police on things they will or will not do. I think that if there wasn't the police officer on or a firefighter or a fire crew out somewhere, that they would have no choice but to call the highway department direct. Unless they want to try to call somebody else, but I don't think that how that would work.
Okay.
Mike Carlson, did you?
Hey, hey, Josh. This is Mike.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, uh, Flackter, uh, Chief Flackter sent an email out to the local departments about, uh, a county meeting coming up soon to try and discuss other options here for maybe getting that regional dispatch idea back into play. Um, you know, no matter what we do, it's going to be expensive, I think. And I think back in the day when the sheriff department was going to do it, it's like $800,000 to get it going. So it it's still a sizable chunk of change, but like Joey said, if it's a good, a good service, then it's worth the cost. Um, so I think it'll be more to come shortly. Um, we'll, next couple weeks getting together and trying to open this discussion up again.
Mike, um, is there any word out there, like some public service grants or something that, um, if we were to form a regional dispatch service that we might be able to tap in to help with the cost?
I haven't seen anything, Joey, but you know, that's something we can bring up to Bob too, because he's really a very good grant writer. And if there's something out there, he can certainly find it. Um, you know, it's not going to be an overnight fix, that's for sure. Um, I did get them, I mean, I had called Bob when I called for times when I had no knowledge they were going to stop it and he did tend to raise this thinking they are going to give us times now. Um, you know, he said, that's a very important part of of our our note taking of of dispatch arriving and returning. So he did get him to agree to go back to doing that for us. Um,
I mean, that's that's a critical part of the function unless you have your own dispatcher and towns can't afford to leave one guy behind to do all that stuff.
Correct, correct. So so more to come. I mean, we'll keep you up to date as soon as we have a county meeting. Um, hopefully we get some movement again on this, but again, it's not going to be a cheap proposition, but like you say, it's definitely worth a little extra money if the service is going to be there. Um, I did hear, you know, through Bob that one of the big problems they're having, like at Westminster, there's seven open slots right now. You know, they just, they can't get anybody to fill the seats or they hire somebody and they last about two weeks and they're done. So that is a huge, huge issue.
Yeah. Well, a lot of the dispatchers that were in Rutland, you know, if they're traveling that, you know, it's a travel thing and and if you have to drive an hour to work or two hours to work, people don't want to do it.
Correct, yep. And quality, you know, the quality's not there that we had in Rutland for sure.
No, no. Too much workload and and unfamiliarity with the territory you just mentioned.
Alright. Ted, anything else?
Um, no, I think that's about it. Yep.
Anything for the people? Alright, John Paul, are you frozen or are you there?
I'm here.
Okay. You have anything for the town health officer, uh, report?
Oh, no, I've just, I've got three cases, uh, currently pending that I'm working on, but nothing noteworthy.
Oh, can I ask one? Um, JP? Um, last year we were doing, before COVID hit, we were doing some property cleanups and I was asked about the one up on Perkins Road. And I know we had given the landowner some additional time. I'm sure that time is up. Where are we with those cleanups?
I'm in the process of negotiating with that owner. Um, and hope may have something to report to the board in the next 30 days or so.
Okay, thank you much.
Josh?
Go ahead, John.
Do we need to, um, we didn't do this at the special meeting, but the town had had or come up with that mask thing that we needed to ratify or vote on. Do we need to still do that? The the wearing of face coverings in town. Um, was that one of the meetings that I missed?
Yeah, so two.
I thought that I thought that was ratified at the last meeting.
We did not do it, JP, at the special meeting because we wanted you to be present and if there was any particulars that were missing or needed to be done, or if we should just move forward as written.
Yeah, I would just make a motion we ratify, uh, what we had done with regard to face masks.
I'll second it.
Motion by John, second by Joe. Further discussion?
Just a question. Is there any difference between our mandate on face masks now and what the governor has ordered?
I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. I mean, we can make it more extensive, but we can't ask for less.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? John Paul, I I found it interesting, um, this afternoon, one of the, one of the, uh, our town officers mentioned to me that we've had around a dozen 911 hangups or false calls from Holiday Inn, uh, from the camp. Uh, and that's that's frustrating to hear. I don't know.
Yeah, it's.
At this point, I
It sure is.
I'm just reporting the news at this point. I don't know what, if there's any action to take, but that's discouraging.
Well, certainly something to keep in mind when the various licenses come up for that facility.
Yep. Have they been able to keep the, uh, noise level down? Um, I have a friend that works at the Hampton Inn and she contacted me about, uh, uh, noise ordinance or anything. I guess they've had a lot of problems down there and I think Ted probably can speak to this. I think they've been called multiple times. Have they got that under control?
So as far as
I'm not aware, John.
I I know of one complaint from a noise ordinance that we took. Um, I'm not aware of any others. But I can obviously look into it. Maybe they coded it out as something different than noise disturbance.
Okay.
Sounds like they're the noise down in Bennington at the other camp that they're running. I mean, that's been on the, that's been on the Channel 3 news every other night. It's like the noise problem, Benning, the Bennington select board is having to deal with.
Yeah.
But.
It's I know, it's like people are looking for reasons to just circumvent trying to be safe and try to get this virus thing under control. They're like trying to do everything they can to make it worse.
Tells you a little bit about, um, the Holiday Inn and who might want to go there any longer. I think I would have a, I I would have an issue supporting them in much of anything.
Yep. And, well, maybe when the corporate part of that, their franchise deal comes up again, maybe somebody should tell them what's been going on down there.
Yep.
Well, we had, we had sent them a letter from the town last fall, uh, on behalf of the board when they had the explosion. And we never jump, oh, we never heard from their corporate officers or corporate, uh, about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what kind of relationship exists other than maybe a licensing of the name. I'm not sure that Holiday Inn exercises any control over the local franchises. At least you can't show it by Rutland.
No, you can't because that's a very poor, uh, advertising and very poor, uh, showing of the Holiday Inn name. Um, that really bothers me.
Well, I think that, I think that they did some serious damage to their reputation once they they forced the, um, blood drive run by Steve Costello and company to to find another location within a week of the scheduled event. Um, uh, to make room for the campers to come. I mean, that's one of the big blood drives in New England every year and just, and to displace them. Um, that that will get the attention of a lot of people in town who are very discouraged with with how they handled that, so.
Yep, not good citizen.
No.
Alright, uh, committee meeting updates?
Thanks, JP.
Anything from committee, any committee meetings that we need to talk about? Uh, Mary and I, uh, at four o'clock today took a call with, uh, Joe Anthony and, uh, a couple other folks from Zayas. Um, Bill was in the room. Um, and uh, I thought, you know, once again, you know, every time I think we walk away from hearing from these folks, I feel like, you know, man, they get, they have some good intentions and good plans. We'll see, I hope. Um, the big part, last meeting, if you recall, we sent a letter to them asking them to, uh, mow, pick trash, secure the building and so on. They've, uh, contracted with Carpenter and Costin. They said by the end of this week, they should have everything mowed, looking better. Um, and, uh, then they went on to some of their plans that they have for the future. They still have intentions of demolishing the building. They they feel they're in talks still with major retailers. Albeit, um, certainly postponed due to the virus. Uh, they apologized on behalf of their organization about the condition of the facilities and they committed to Mary and I that they were going to um, touch base monthly with, uh, the board, whether it be through Bill or one of us or whatever. They also, um, have a property manager full time now that they've hired. Uh, a gentleman lives in Queche. He says that he's at the facility 40 hours a week, uh, working on plans for the future for the facility, including um, talking to retailer, potential retailers and so on to come into to town. So Mary, what were your takeaways from that meeting?
Um, well, I wanted to know how, whether, you know, this was just, um, more of gee, we'd like to do this, or whether they had moved along with any plans. Um, so, well, they have hired the, um, gentleman from Queche. That's a step in the right direction. They have not filed for any modification of their Act 250 permit. They have identified an attorney and they said they have been using him on various leases with potential tenants. So there's some more indication that something actually is moving. Um, and I asked if they had an architect lineup lined up to do the changes that, um, they were speaking of. And they mentioned a, um, group out of Chicago, so which does exist. I mean, I looked them up online. Um, so we've gotten, um, some, you know, movement, um, and I, let's see if the monthly meetings with them happen because that really is, um, that's going to be critical to see if they really stay in touch with us.
I did, one other thing I did, I did appreciate, um, the fact that they had been, they offered the the mall as a uh, emergency shelter or a COVID-19 overflow center for the state and hospital, um, which I thought was, you know, nice of them to do for the community. The state did, however, pick the Spartan Arena right behind the mall, but I thought that was a good sign that they were still interested in being good community stewards, so.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they were rattling off a number of things that they had done, one of which I know didn't actually occur. So you know, I'm still taking it with a bit of a grain of salt.
That could be. They are good salespeople, that's for sure. Uh, anything around the mall or shall we move on?
Josh, are they talking about trying to rejuvenate that building or get new tenants in a new building?
Yeah, so I think, I think what we heard was today was the same thing that we heard last year was the the, uh, two thirds of the mall would be demolished, keeping the seers, the seers end of it. Uh, and then, you know, they they love to have some mixed use housing. Uh, you know, retailers, uh, potentially, uh, um, motel or hotel, uh, you know, a lot of the same sort of plans that they had mentioned, uh, previously. Um, they did, the the other thing they did say was that this gentleman goes through that mall every day and, you know, the and, you know, these rumors of people being in the facility, breaking in, and, uh, these people being there. He says it just isn't the case, he said, I'm in there 40 hours a week, I don't see remnants of bodily fluids, or, uh, garbage, or anything else that wasn't there from the previous day, so, you know, we'll see, we'll see what that is, you know, if that's true or not, too, but... I don't know, I left the meeting feeling somewhat satisfied, at least, with what they're gonna do with mowing, and Mary, I, I don't know, overall, if you felt a little bit, but...
Well, they talked with us, and they made some, um, offers, and that was good, the talking was good, and if the carry-through is there, even better.
All right, uh, under new business, uh, A, B, C, D, all been handled. Um, E, we know we're gonna meet with, uh, the tax collector shortly. Um... Old business come before the board?
I'm good.
Uh, table business, because of application of operational stormwater permit for Northwood, we handled, right?
Yep.
And, um... Uh, table motion, uh, by the property owner of the Dumbrum Mall, per, yeah, so, uh, Carrie and Howard have been in discussion with the mall owners in regards to their request for their tax, uh, abatement. Um, so, more to, more to come on that, nothing to report tonight. Uh, before we go into executive, so Jim Schultz and Byron, we're gonna, the, the five board members are gonna go into executive session shortly, and then we'll come back out, and Bill says there's a way to invite you back into the room, so if you'll just hang on for a minute or two, don't hang up, and then we'll, we'll take you one by one. Jim, I'll probably take Byron first, because Byron's is gonna be, I think, a lot quicker than you, than your portion, okay?
Well, not a problem, so my understanding is I keep hooked up to the meeting online, and, uh, my good friend, Mr. Bill, will come get me.
Exactly.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, before, uh, before we go into executive session, did I make one, any final thoughts? Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Don't move.
Joe, is there a second?
Yeah, for...
Yeah, I'll second, it's for the purpose of discussing personnel and, um...
Tax sale.
And, oh, possible, I'm sorry, what was that, everybody was talking?
I'm sorry, Mary, uh, tax sale.
Okay.
Yep.
Those, that's it, yep, it was, there was a second, was that you, Mary?
Yeah.
Okay.
My Mary, for discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, good night, everyone, hang on there, board, board members, and then we'll, uh, we'll get back with Byron.